And it wasn't, and it wasn't true.
We got close. We got close. We got close. One, two, three.
Next, uh, oh, I agree with you there. Okay, item, uh, twenty, resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two rate set to Nancy Lopez Golf Course to consider for adoption of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two to restructure and increase the rates and fees at the Nancy Lopez Golf Course. Uh, Councilman Orpressa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, based on the recommendation of the General Services Committee, I move for adoption of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two, which if adopted would restructure and increase all rates and fees at Nancy Lopez Golf Course at Spring River.
Okay, with most of my Councilman Orpressa's second by.
Second.
Councilman Halverson. Okay, Mr. Burris, you go ahead, sir.
Well, I'm gonna let him tell it.
Whoever, I mean, who all you.
You guys met Eric. He's a golf pro out there and.
Eric?
Eric, yeah. I thought I'd bring him up here with me. He's doing a great job, by the way. Very proud of him. So, Eric, you wanna jump in here or you want me to speak to this? All right. Okay, I'm gonna let him go for a little bit, but the main thing here, uh, as we get started, his prices have been increased for a long time. Basically, it's five percent increase. We put some new fees in there that did not exist, just to kind of make things fair across the board. There was differences whether it was the high schools or the seniors, and we just cleaned it up because there's too many. And, uh, so I'm gonna let him speak to that, but it's more of a maintenance item. So, go ahead, Eric.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present a resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two rates at Nancy Lopez Golf Course. So, let's get this bad boy going in there. All right, so rates here, they haven't been changed since two thousand fifteen, fourteen fifteen. Uh, there's too many different types of memberships, uh, some that don't work for our current system. Uh, there's no rates in place since the city took over for tournaments, high schools, leagues, twilight, et cetera. Also, we'll get into the Yama Track GPS screens are gonna be coming on our new carts. All right, so like he said, we're proposing to increase all annual fees by five percent. Uh, there are two that we are looking to change, though, because right now a senior, single or couple, they can only play during the weekdays. So, we want to try to make it fair so they can play on the weekends as well. So, we're gonna get rid of that and put in the single anytime membership. That'd be that four seventy-seven, and a couple, uh, senior membership would be five ninety-five. Um, there's also juniors. We have two different junior memberships right now. They have one that if your parents play golf and are members, it's only a hundred and thirty-five dollars, and if your parents don't play golf, you've got to pay three hundred and sixty dollars. So, I want to get rid of both of those and just have a junior membership period and, uh, charge a hundred and thirty-five dollars. I mean, a hundred and fifty dollars, sorry. Proposed monthly fees, again, five percent increase. Um, we do not have anything for the seniors for a monthly membership. We're looking to, uh, put that into the system with the new membership fee of seventy-five dollars for a senior single, and a senior couple would be a hundred and five dollars. We want to change the membership to calendar year. Right now, it's from the day you purchase it, you get one year, and even the monthly one is one month from the day you purchase it. We want to change this to a calendar year or fiscal year. Reason is, it's easier to keep track of the membership. Sometimes we have people come in that like to say, hey, you know, I think I still got another month. We gotta go through, look the receipts and all this stuff. So, if we can keep something on a plane that's just straight, calendar year or fiscal year, it'd work out so much better for us. Not only that, but it helps us if we decide to change rates. Everybody can change rates at the same time instead of having to prorate because this guy's membership's not until December, or this one's in January or whatever. So, if approved, we will prorate everybody for one year and then, uh, keep it going from there so we can get on that rate. Let's see. Proposed daily green fees. We're only gonna go up a dollar on all green fees. Um, right now, again, junior members, junior green fees, sorry. Right now, currently, we have a weekday rate and a weekend rate. It's only for juniors. Nobody other, nobody else has it except for the juniors, so I want to get rid of that and just have one rate for them, which would be a junior green fee nine or eighteen holes, eight dollars and fifty cents any day of the week. Uh, one thing that we don't have in there that I'm trying to add is a twilight rate. Most golf courses have a twilight rate that is three hours before sunset. Uh, once the twilight starts, there is no more nine-hole rate, though. And I want to put that at fifteen dollars instead of them coming in three hours before and they want to try to play eighteen. They're gonna pay the nineteen, twenty dollars, they're gonna pay the twenty dollars. So, I want to get that twilight rate going, and that's three hours before sunset.
Let's get new these tournaments, leagues. That's fantastic.
Yeah. So, as, as well, we have, uh, special green fees, which is Senior Day on Wednesdays, Ladies' Day on Thursdays, and then we have a city championship. So, we have certain rates. It's a special rate of twelve dollars. We're just gonna increase that to one dollar as well. Something that we don't have in our system at all is, uh, tournament rates, which this tournament rates we'll talk about in the next clip. Also, league rates and, uh, high school golf team rates. So, first up is the tournament rates, and this is to attract people to come and do tournaments at our facility. So, if we're able to give them a little bit of a discount, twenty-five dollars per golfer, they bring us a hundred golfers. Well, they're also gonna buy merchandise in the shop. They're also gonna buy food and beverage at the facility and all that stuff, so it's bringing in more revenue. So, that's gonna be for your fundraising tournaments and all that good stuff. The way the breakdown would be, it would be twelve dollars go to green fee, eleven dollars go to green, uh, cart fee, sorry, and two dollars to range balls. So, that's kind of how the package would break up. Um, next fee. Here we go, league rates. There are no league rates in, in the system as we, uh, talk right now. So, leagues are on weekdays. Usually, they're five P M. or later. We have a Taco Tuesday League. Uh, last year, we had the Roswell Independent Schools had a league. Um, it's nine holes, like I say, it starts usually five, five-thirty. We want to come up with a special rate for them so we can bring more leagues in, and like I said, it is only on nine holes, so it leaves the other nine holes open for the public, no problem, and do a rate of five dollars and seven dollars. Again, it's bringing in more people. They're gonna buy more stuff in the pro shop, and they're also gonna buy more food and beverage. High school. Since the city took over, there is no, I haven't seen any documentation of what the high school fees were. I did speak to, uh, the coaches, and they said they pay fifteen hundred per team. So, seven fifty of that would be for the membership for the golf usage, and the other seven fifty would be for range balls. So, I mean, we just need to get that in the system because there is nothing there. One thing I would like to do, though, is limit the players to fifteen per team. Right now, we're having eighty kids out there, which is great, but when you have eighty kids out there, one time they take up the whole driving range, the public is getting a little upset with it, so. And also, I'll get with them so we can communicate, and they can use the other facility as well, so it's not so crowded. But, uh, the one thing I do want to change, because right now it's just for the season that they're in, the four months for the, during the golf season is all that they get. I would like to let them play all year round and hit balls all year round. Keeps them out of, out of all the other places they could possibly be, but on the golf course, hitting balls and getting better, and let's see what we can do with the, with the junior stuff. Um, with that, though, I would like to limit that to just ten per student. We'd give them a little pass, a little card, so we know who the ten are for each team, and they can come out and hit balls and play golf during the thing. But also, we'll ask that they help us with, uh, any clean picks or any junior camps that we do run. They come in and help us with that. Cart fees. So, here we go. We are getting new fleet of golf carts here in June. These golf carts will have Yama Track GPS screens installed on them. With these GPS screens, you'll be able to get your yardage on there. You'll be able to see the green, the actual footage of the green, and you'll be able to see front, middle, back. Um, on this thing, you can also keep score. You can message, we can message anybody on the thing saying, hey, you guys are two minutes behind, or you guys are two holes behind, or whatever. We can message whatever. We can also run advertisements on this screen. So, if we have anything coming up in the city, anywhere coming up, we can advert, throw advertisement up there every twenty minutes or whatever it is. Um, and also, the big thing that this thing will do is the cart will shut off when the golfer drives in a restricted area. Right now, they drive, I mean, we try to patrol as much as we can. They've done it for so many years. They'll drive right up next to the greens. Obviously, our superintendent does not like that good stuff, but, uh, this thing will automatically shut off. Waits about a minute and it turns back on so you can get out of the thing. Gives you like ten seconds to get out of the restricted area, so. With this thing, it is gonna be a per cart monthly due or payment, sorry. And, uh, after the whole year, it's gonna be thirty dollars and three hundred and sixty for the, for this. So, we're gonna increase the carts to one fifty to cover the yearly cost of Yama Track. Next, bag storage room. Right now, there's no cost for the bag storage room. We're looking just to charge a hundred and twenty dollars for two thousand thir, uh, twenty-three. Um, that's just ten dollars a month to store your bag there. We've cleaned it up. I mean, before, it was really bad. We've cleaned it up. We've painted it. I mean, it's a much better facility now than it was before. We got cameras in there, too, so totally different. Uh, disclaimer, golf course, golf course discretion. The golf course manager, along with the director, have the ability to change rates, fees, or merchandise price at any time, but not to exceed twenty percent. And that's all I've got. I'm here for questions.
Are there questions? Council, uh, do you have anything, Mr. Burris, to add?
He's doing a great job. We studied everything that wasn't, that we didn't feel was quite right, to limit the.
Mr. Burris, can you speak into the mic?
He's doing a great job. I want to tell him thanks. We studied anything that we didn't feel was quite right. Uh, with the memberships, you play all the time except for the weekend, or that had to do with the speed of play, whether the kids were out there or the, or the seniors. We made it fair. We're using the golf carts, hopefully, here in a minute, to, uh, to keep an eye on, on the speed, right, so we can see that from the clubhouse, and if we need to come out there and help you out with the, with a soda or a hot dog, and you let some people play through. And we also don't have to hire someone to marshal the course, so we've studied this for a year, and we think these things are all fair. That's about all I got to say right now.
Thank you, Mr. Burris. Mr. Councilman Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I like a lot of the things I've seen, and, and you already answered one of my questions, because I, I like the idea of having the golfer, the high schoolers play year-round instead of just in season, keep them playing right. Um, the one question I have is for the, your membership. Do they, you get, I mean, at the Quaddick Center and the, we, we have cards, um, scanner cards. Do y'all not have a card?
So, our computer system actually keeps track of it completely. It tells you when you're a member. We got an expiration date on there. But yes, we do have those cards that, for the ones that do ask for it, we do print them out that card. It, we put it on there and laminate it for them.
Because then that way, there, you can scan, and it tells them exactly when they have.
It does tell them on there, yeah. What ends up happening is a lot of them lose it. They lose their card, and they come in. Like I said, we've dealt with it, especially with the big change when Carlton left and us taking over and all that stuff. There was a lot of discrepancy of when their memberships really, really ended, so.
And the other thing, looking at our, um, budget, it looks like we're gonna be putting, transferring about six hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars into the golf course. How many rounds of golf would you say that we, we average a year?
I'd say it's probably about thirty-five. Don't quote me on that, but I'd say it's about thirty-five thousand. It's increasing each year because I keep track of the stuff, and every month, it's, keeps increasing from last year to this year, so.
So, that's cool. So, that's, that keeps it under about twenty dollars, and that's one of the things that when, when I talk to our, uh, citizens, I say, you realize that for every time someone goes out and plays, the, the citizens of Roswell are subsidizing it at about eighteen dollars a round. Or, I, it used to be higher. It used to be about twenty-five dollars a round that we were subsidizing. So, uh, at thirty-five thousand and six hundred and twenty-two thousand that we're tran, we're transferring in, it's less than twenty dollars a round, so that's, it's getting better. Um, but the other thing that I don't see on this scheduling fee is one of the things I've asked for ten years is a tiered fee. Um, if you live within the city of Roswell, you should pay a lesser rate because we're subsidizing that golf course than if you live outside the city of Roswell. Um, and, and many of golf courses around this country have tiered rates. If you're a, you know, if you live in the county, you get a different rate. If you live in the state, you get a different rate. If you live out, out of state. Um, our, our green fee, and I know we have to keep our green fee, uh, competitive to, to what, um, the NIMI course is, but we do have a lot of people, we're, I mean, we're the Nancy Lopez Spring River Golf Course. Um, a lot of people come into town, and they're not looking to, at prices, and so paying a higher price, if, they, they don't have a problem with it. So, I, that's one thing that I'd like to see is a tiered fee, and it's really explainable when you start talking about how much the citizens of Roswell put into the golf course. And so, um, that's one thing that I would like to see, um, that I don't. And I've talked about it for, like I said, ten years, and I don't know why you can't get at it, but, but, um, other than that, the interesting other thing is that the budget for, uh, the golf course is about the exact same for the zoo. So, if we're gonna, I know it wouldn't be very popular if we say, if we're gonna make the zoo free, let's make the golf course free, too. I'm sure you'd fill up all your tee times, but, um, with that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Councilman Perry. Council, our Council, our Councilman Foster. Councilman Perry.
Uh, just a quick, I've had a couple of constituents that have reached out to me by email. Uh, it's becoming more and more popular to own golf carts, and we know that a lot of, um, uh, communities that have golf car, uh, golf courses, they have special fees where there'd be a daily rate, weekly rate, monthly rate, yearly rate, for them to be able to bring their own golf cart and utilize it. Has that been considered, or is that being looked at by Parks and Recs or anything?
We've had a few incidents out there with, with, uh, people misusing some of the carts, and if, if you had brought your own and, and bumped another cart or run into a tree, things like that, we're looking at that. Uh, it's called a trail fee, but yes, we have, we have considered it, and we're, we're looking into that, so we did, uh, listen.
I think that that'd be worthy of looking into. I think we have a lot of folks here in the, in the area who would, who would like to see that being considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Council Lady Bass.
Okay, just coming off yours real quick, Jason, that just hit my brain. If you bring those golf carts on your GPS tracker, do you just hand them one as they go through so you can track them?
No, they're not trackable. We, they, these guys could watch them, but no, the, the GPS is built into the carts, has a screen across the top.
Okay. Um, my next question is, I have a, a little bit of a problem with the disclaimer because unless you come back to the council so we can all agree to raise our prices and stuff, that just takes it out of the council's hand, and I kind of have a problem with that, so I almost want to make an amendment to pull that from this.
We're just looking at, like, a shirt, golf balls, a shirt, golf clubs, something like that, if it, it came up. We had to raise the price for a shirt, not so much the fees at all.
Then, then maybe it needs to be included on there. So, if we can include that, that, that it, that is the stuff in the pro shop, that wouldn't be fees, golf cart, fees and all of that, strictly stuff in the pro shop. I, I would make that a friendly amendment.
Acceptable amendment.
And I think you should charge the ducks and the foxes myself, because they're out there.
Yes, they are.
Well, I don't have skunks. Anyway, I, I would like to amend and add to that in the pro shop. The twenty percent in the pro shop.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Okay, we have Councilman Hildebrand.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to get this resolution correct, you talked about changing the dates of either a calendar year or to a fiscal year. Counselor, does this need to be in the resolution, or is this gonna be at the discretion of management of the golf course? Because it's not in the resolution.
Yeah. I think we referred calendar. I thought we took out the other one, so.
I, I didn't see it in the resolution that these fees are based upon January one to December thirty-one or from. December thirty-one, or from July one to June thirty. I don't see that in here.
If you did June-
So if that needs to be in the resolution, Counselor, we may need to amend your amendment, or change your amendment, if you don't mind.
So I think I'm, I'm wanting to know, so you, are you wanting this just to happen for a year? Are you just wanting it to make sure it's in?
Well, he said that they were going to do this as of Jan-, either start the memberships as January one, or Ju-, or July one. Which is it going to be?
Oh, okay.
You know, we need, does it need to be in the resolution?
It wouldn't hurt.
And, and the other one I have in here, for clarification, on page one oh nine, you've got in there, a couple of memberships must be living at the same address. You've got that listed two times.
Well, it's two people.
There's two members.
That needs to be.
Yeah, okay.
So, so for that amendment, my question to you is, do you want it June or-
I'm fine with that.
January, please. Calendar year, please.
January of twenty-four. You want to raise these?
No, I mean, we would, we would like to raise them immediately. What that's talking about is to, if we can start prorating, to change, to change it, to be able to do it anytime we want. Right now, I would like to increase them ASAP, and prorate them, if we could, like I said, like it said in the-
So you're wanting a calendar month?
Something to the effect of, whatever it's going to be, it is, if it needs to be in this resolution, let's get it clarified. And because your presentation had-
Yeah, two.
Two.
Yeah, we want to raise the fees immediately. However, we want to start calculating on calendar year.
Calendar year.
Calendar year for the memberships going forward. So we'll prorate now.
Prorate now, and then to where it's on a calendar year.
You'll prorate them till January one.
If it gets passed, if we can prorate this next year, prorate this year, and then go into a calendar year all the time for the fees.
So prorate from June to December thirty-first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why would this even need to be in a resolution? I mean, you just had to do it.
Well, he was saying in there that they would either pick one or the other, and that's, you know.
No, we pick one or the other. Like I said, I mean, it's, it's kind of one of those things, just to get on a calendar year, whether it's a fiscal year.
Which it's going to be.
Which, to me, I mean, I didn't know if it needed to be a fiscal year for you all, or if it could be a calendar year for us. I mean, calendar year is obviously the best for us.
You might have two shots at the apple if you do it.
I think so.
June and July. I mean, where it goes through June and July. You know, I mean, people, I don't know.
I think we'd like to prorate, and, and from now on, we'll prorate, but we'd like to go to the calendar year. All software, and it just makes it easier for our members.
Okay, simplicity.
We'd, yeah, we just have to make it simple, and pick something we need to qualify to, and we'd like to do it the calendar year.
Okay, Councilman Corn, did you want to add on this?
Yeah, I want to make a motion. Send it back to legal, and we get all these holes filled up. And we'll have, we, we'll put it on the agenda for the next legal committee, won't we, Mr. Chairman?
If that's where you want it, that's what we'll do.
Huh?
I'd kind of like it passed tonight, so.
We're getting late.
No, no. No, I want it cleaned up.
Okay, so I'll make a friendly amendment to send it back to legal, and it come back in our June meeting. Second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor now. I think, Councilman Corn, did you want to say anything before we go? We had an original motion on the floor.
I friendly amended it.
And you friendly amended it?
Amended it.
Mr. Mayor, the situation is, we've got a great amendment started, and then we've got a couple of other things that have come up during the discussion that need to be nailed down. And I agree, this is not the place to do nail stuff down. And we need to, we need to clean up our act in our committee meetings, and then bring them in here, and they ought to be ready to go. And this one is not ready to go.
So we have a motion?
The, the motion was to go to legal, then to June meeting, clean it up in legal, then go to June meeting, and?
Yeah, we'll put it on the next-
There was no second to that motion.
Yeah, there is. Oh, there is.
There is.
Oh, don't, don't you think I wasn't prepared for that one?
Okay.
We're going to have a good legal meeting.
My next question is, Mr. Mayor, which amendment, which are we voting on?
We would be meaning-
Motion to refer precedents.
No, she amended her, I made a friendly amendment.
You, you did a friendly?
Yes.
Yeah. And it was a friendly amendment, and then we had, after that, we had a second to the friendly amendment. We made it twice as friendly. So the motion is to send this back to the legal committee, and then hopefully, they will send it back to the June meeting. I mean, I don't think we can direct them to do that. Maybe, I'm not sure. You directed them to do that with a-
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment to my unfriendly amendment, I guess. And besides, Mr. Mayor, if I recall correctly, and Mr. Yatima can correct me, a motion to refer kind of gets up there on the top list of things to consider. And he's nodding.
Only an amendment or to postpone indefinitely, it takes more precedence.
I thought we had a motion to refer it to legal committee.
Yes.
And that's what I was, you know, and that's, would you like the motion to? Okay, all those in favor of, well, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
By a vote of-
He just did that out of spite, I think.
Four.
Eight. By a vote of seven to one, the motion is referred back to, uh, legal committee. Won't that be fun? Okay, next we go to item twenty-one. Okay, we have some members here that would like to speak on this item. We have Nicole East, Megan Theis, I believe is what it says, and Catherine Goats, and Sammy Lefler. Lefler, excuse me. Uh, item, uh, resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three, consider the adoption of Resolution twenty dash twenty-three for animal services community cat program. We have, uh, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand. Uh, and, did you, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. I was just, I was just hearing noise at the other end of the, of the DS, and I didn't know whether they were ready or not.
He hasn't made the motion yet.
Let's get the part to legal in a minute.
No, it won't.
Councilman Hildebrand, would you make your motion?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-two, three dash twenty-three, participation in the animal services community cat program.
Second.
Who is the second, please? I couldn't tell.
She can have it.
This is Arnold. Uh, motion by Councilman Hildebrand, second by Counselor Arnold. Um, okay, now we have, okay, who wants to discuss this? Nicole, if you-
Good evening. My name is Nicole East. I am a citizen of Roswell, and a board member of the Support Roswell Animals Group. I care about cats, and I urge you to vote yes on Resolution twenty-three, twenty-three, participation in animal services community cat program. Last August, the city of Roswell hosted a public meeting here, and our group shared our concerns for better cat outcomes. Thank you to the city leaders for listening to our concerns, and, and inviting experts, Best Friends Animal Society, to evaluate our city animal shelter operation, and provide feedback on how we can improve. Best Friends visited our shelter last fall and provided an assessment report. Their report emphasizes the need for a cat life-saving program, otherwise known as TNVR, Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, Return. Right now, Roswell is catching and killing. This method does not stop the perpetual breeding of outdoor cats. One intact feral cat can reproduce as early as four months old. She can birth up to three litters per year, or a hundred kittens in a lifetime, over maybe a period of seven years, which is young. But the increase is exponential. Due to overbreeding, we are constantly intaking cats at our shelter just to euthanize them. It's a cycle of killing. Taxpayers are paying to shelter, feed, and care for an ongoing intake of cats that are fated to be euthanized. It is a complete waste of our money to feed and care for cats that are going to be killed anyway, and it's an inhumane method of controlling the cat population. I support the new proposed program, which offers an alternative humane method of managing our community cat population by sterilizing cat communities rather than killing them. Research studies show that TNVR programs reduce shelter intake of cats, which reduces the euthanasia rate, and frees up resources within the shelter system. This benefits the taxpayer, as they are no longer spending money on euthanizing cats, only to see cats go in and take their place outside where we found them. TNVR is the only humane method of reducing the outdoor cat population over time, while also protecting our community against diseases and nuisance behaviors. Catching and killing is not working, otherwise we would no, we would not be having this problem. As mentioned, this program will greatly curtail feline nuisance behaviors in our community. When outdoor cats are fixed, they are no longer driven by hormones, and they're less likely to get into cat faits, make disruptive noises, and spray urine to mark territory, et cetera. So cats that are released back into the community after being sterilized will not be as much of a nuisance compared to cats who are currently intact.
Excuse me, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am.
It's okay.
Next, we have Megan Theis. I believe that's Theis.
Uh, first, I did want to say thank you for considering the program for cats. I am Megan Theis. I'm a former animal control employee with nine years in the field. Five years with the city of Las Cruces, and four years here in Roswell, though I am born and raised in Roswell. During a two-month period in two thousand nineteen, while employed with Roswell Animal Services, I spoke with every citizen who brought in a cat in a trap. As you can imagine, that is a great deal of people, especially in the summertime. In the summer, we were filling up the feral room three times a week, twenty-six cages being euthanized three times a week. Of these citizens I spoke with, after giving an explanation of what TNVR was, they were very overwhelmingly positive response-wise, with enthusiasm for trying this program. These citizens wanted to try the program to decrease feral cat numbers in their areas humanely. Studies show that removing the one nuisance cat will only lead to another cat replacing it. Also, by implementing a TNR program, we would be ensuring a healthier community, where the cats will be vaccinated against diseases. A TNR program would resolve citizen concerns, and make Roswell Animal Services a more hopeful place for cats. Please pass this resolution to start a pilot TNR program, and the results will soon speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Catherine Goats. Go?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Catherine Getz.
Getz, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, uh, I'm not a resident of the city, but I am of the county, and I'm here to voice my support for this program. I have had recent experiences, which I believe pertain to the city, and so I'd like to just share those with you. Last weekend, I volunteered, excuse me, for the Affordable Spay and Neuter Clinic that was held. An organization from Colorado came down to help with our cat situation by providing the Affordable Spay/Neuter to help reduce the population that they see transferred up to their shelters to help find homes for these excess cats. I was surprised to find that many individuals had actually trapped cats to bring to this clinic to have them, uh, feral cats, to have them fixed and then released, for the benefits of having rodent control, or perhaps they had built some relationship with the cat. Anyhow, I've found also, from personal experience, because I tried to assist at, uh, feral cats with NIMI, that it is cost prohibitive for individuals to do this. It, the vet fees for spay and neuter in this town are very excessive for an individual to undertake a feral cat population. So, um, having a, a program that would provide this service would then facilitate the action being taken, whereas individuals, as I was saying, cannot afford to do this. Another recent example is, unfortunately, a woman in the community where I live, the neighborhood where I live, recently passed away. And this has just been within a couple of months. She had quite a few cats, I mean, excessive. And this now has resulted in a problem for the neighborhood. And so, through this one organization, through Colorado, they are helping me trap these cats, get them fixed, and then they're being re-released to our neighborhood, so that they can continue with rodent control for some less tidy neighborhood folks. And so, we're, we're getting the benefit of having the rodent control, and then also a humane way of handling this, which also hopefully honors this woman that passed. She was just basically doing the best she could. And there's other individuals via this spay and neuter clinic that I participated in, that you see this as a repeat pattern, that perhaps persons are lonely, or whatever, and they start feeding cats, and then it gets exponential fairly quickly. So I, I really do, um, uh, would love to see this program being tried. I think it has numerous benefits, as, as the other women can expound on, but thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Sammy Lefler, Lefler, excuse me. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Sammy Lefler. I'm with Friends of Roswell Animals. I've actively been doing rescue work with Roswell Animal Services for a little over ten years. I would like to thank the council for considering this new program here in Roswell, and appreciate the time to speak to you. I would like to weigh in my thoughts on how this will make a tremendous difference for Roswell. The Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, Return is growing increasingly popular, and is being utilized in more and more communities across the nation. The program can be attributed to its many proven advantages over other methods of animal control. These advantages include a permanent reduction of feral and stray cat populations, cost savings to animal control, and the elimination of nuisance behaviors like spraying and fighting. In addition, by returning the spay and neuter, uh, and rabies-vaccinated feral cats to their territory, TNVR provides the public health benefits of rat abatement, um, and protection against rabies transmission from wildlife species. The lower feral population also helps to lower any predation on birds and wildlife by cats. Again, thank you for your consideration of this beneficial program. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. Appreciate it. Sorry, hard on the last name there. Okay, next we have Counselor, uh, uh, excuse me, that was, oh, oh, excuse me.
You guys have got to be sick of me at this point. All right, uh, Counsel, just a little background on this. So Best Friends did come in and do an audit, and produced a number of results for us. As part of this audit, they have offered to come in and subsidize an employee to co-work at the animal shelter, implement a number of measures that they see fit. In initial discussions with them, it became clear that this particular program was a non-negotiable. They made it clear that they simply would not want to proceed in any contract- They made it clear that they simply would not want to proceed in any contract to provide an employee to us without it. From legal's perspective, this does fit within the current ordinance, so there's no need to amend the ordinance, but I'd feel a lot more comfortable negotiating further, knowing that you support this particular program. That's all I've got.
Counsel Lady Halverson.
So as Mr. Intima stated, Best Friends offered to send someone in here for a cost of, I think, $160,000 to help us clean up our animal control, and this was part of the program. I did talk to Missy Funk, she's the Animal Control Director in Hobbs, and I've given each Counselor a copy of the stats from them. Missy said she's had huge success with their TNR program in Hobbs, and she highly recommends we do do it. She also added that the most important thing to take into consideration is the reduction of cats and the health of cats that enter to the facility. So since we are vaccinating them, the ones that are picked up are much healthier, and they're not, you know, as feral. She also did say, she pointed out that a lot of the people in the community actually trap them and bring them in as well, which helps, you know, the facility not having to send out staff to go pick them up. But I highly recommend this. The costs on the graph that you see in front of you, they come from the amounts of, for the spay and neuter, that comes from Best Friends, and they, the reason I called Hobbs is because the city of Hobbs is listed on there, is one of the places that they pay those fees. Mr. Burris is going to set up an appointment with one of our local vets to see what kind of prices we can get, but Best Friends has assured us that they will help us try to find grants and information if we need to pay more, but the average cost is what's listed there, is what these other locations that you see listed on there do pay. So I would like this, to see this passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Counsel Lady Best.
So I'm a little bit confused. This is a resolution to have this person come in to our facility and work there, is that right? Because that's where we started first, and then I was dropped off somewhere along the line. I didn't go to meetings, or I didn't know when they were. So in my mind, we were trying to figure out a contract for Best Friends to come in, then be paid, and work in our facility. Is that what this is, or is just the TNVR?
This is just the program. It is not a contract with Best Friends.
So this doesn't have to do with Best Friends coming in and doing that program? This is just starting a program for the TNVR?
Well, it's, 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 yes.
Okay, so that's, I don't see a contract here for a person.
Correct. When we were negotiating over it, they made explicit that this type of program needed to exist in order for them to come here.
Okay. So, and I'm not quite sure who this question goes to. If you're going to do a, and we had somebody come in and talk about it when I was Public Chair a year ago, and Mike Matthews and I, we were rewriting the ordinance and everything. They did bring this into us, but reading this, my question now is, is one year enough to see the effects? Because you're saying in one year, we should see the effects, and we'll go back and reevaluate. But if your kittens are starting at four months, and you're having three litters a year, the question is, are you, do you have enough time to spay and neuter enough of these feral cats to even make a dent in this town? Because they're like crazy in this town.
May I answer that?
Sure.
If you look at the stats from Hobbs, you can see that it made a huge difference in one year.
In one year?
Yeah. So if we do implement it, and we see that it's working, I think we can write it into ordinance, I mean to.
Yes, and Madam Counselor, this was the, the one year was at the request of Best Friends.
Well, they know what they're doing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perry.
I fully support the program, 100%. I think that this is, we've seen this work in several places across the nation, so I think it's great. My only question is that I have, is what happens once they are setting traps and they catch cats that have been spayed or neutered? Would the officer then be required to take that cat back to, or are we now just now releasing, if they've been spayed or neutered, and they're in a cage, we just open the cage and let them back out? What is the process there?
Yeah, I would assume they just let it go. If it's already, because I would assume they would just let it go. They're going to notch the years when they're spayed and neutered. And we do have the attorney for Best Friends online. If you guys have questions for her, is she available?
Yeah, oh, I didn't know we had the attorney online. If the attorney can speak to what other communities are doing, once they're trapping cats that already are, all already spayed or neutered, what is the normal process?
Amalia, can we put Lady on? She's available.
Can you hear me?
Can we turn her on?
Yes.
Okay, can you, can you, can you all hear me now?
Can you guys put her on the screen?
Thank you so much for considering this program. We're excited to work with your city.
Hold on just one moment, let's see if we can work on some, some volume here, we're having some difficulty. Try again.
Okay, usually I'm pretty loud.
There you go, there you go, go ahead.
Okay, good, good. So yes, the Councilwoman is correct. Best Friends really does want to work with the city, and cats are one of the main issues in your city. And if a cat has already been sterilized, and it's got its little ear clipped, they just let it back out, if it's healthy. The only time they would, you know, take it in is if it had been injured, or if it was, you know, very, very sick. But this program is for any healthy cat that hasn't been sterilized yet, ear tipped, you take it in. For some cats that might not be ear tipped and might be spayed, they will, you know, they will shave the belly, find out, find the space scar, and then they would take it back out. But usually, you can see the ear tip, and you just put them back out, if that helps.
That, that's fine. No, I support the program. Thank you.
Counsel Lady Al.
One thing I do want to point out too, is if there's places where the people don't want the cats, which happens a lot, they said there are alternative measures they can do to try to discourage the cat from returning to that actual location, and find a new location.
Yeah, there's numerous deterrents we can use, and you strategically place them, and we can help provide those deterrents too. But, but basically, there's a lot of ways to keep cats out of your yard.
Okay. Counselor Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just one quick question. I mean, how's this program going to work? Are we going to, you, citizen calls in, Animal Control, and says, I got feral cats running around here, and they're just going to come out and put some cages in? How's this whole thing going to work?
Basically, it can, it'll depend on, on what they find on the ground. I mean, it'll be up to your staff and the person, the embedded person, to figure out the best areas to target, whether to do it on a complaint basis. So it really is a little bit of both, you know? A lot of times, they'll go for the problem areas, examine the zip codes or the streets where they're getting the most complaints, and they'll target there. You know, so basically, you try to get the concentrated areas where there's the most cats.
And Councilman Hildebrand, if all that fails, we're going to refer him to the Legal Committee.
That'd be fun. The other question I have, what happens when my neighbor's cat gets caught and is called a feral cat and gets spayed? And he's really upset. Now, he's really upset.
Well, I think our law says you have to have your cat spayed anyways.
Yeah, and again, that really isn't an issue.
Especially if I'm, got breeding cats?
If you're a purebred cat breeder, you usually don't let your cat out, especially when it's.
So who's going to be responsible when that breeding cat gets neutered?
Okay, if he's microchipped, like he's supposed to be by law, that won't happen, because he'll go back to the owner.
Well, I just don't want to be paying for that cat, have a legal.
We've never run into that problem in all the other cities we've done this in. So again, responsible cat breeders keep their cats indoors. And some of them don't even realize if their cat's been neutered.
Ma'am, ma'am, I think your three minutes is up. No more questions. Okay, are there, are there any further questions? Seeing none, if the clerk would call the roll on Resolution 23-23, participation in the animal services community cat program now.
I do have one question, I'm sorry.
It's too late?
Too late.
If we vote on this, does it take effect immediately, or when does it take effect? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Call the roll.
Counsel Perry.
Aye.
Counsel Foster.
Aye.
Counsel Oropesa.
Yes.
Counsel Hildebrand.
Aye.
Counsel Korn.
Yes.
Counsel Best.
Yes.
Counsel Arnold.
Yes.
And Counsel Halverson.
Yes.
I never get to vote. Okay, next we have, thank you ladies, and it really, it's a good program, it seemed great to me. Okay, next we have ordinance per item 22, ordinance 23-08, consider authorizing to advertise for public hearing for proposed ordinance 23-08, amending the dedication of municipal, local, option grocery receipts tags. Counselman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move that we authorize to advertise for a public hearing for proposed ordinance 23-08, amending the dedication of the municipal, local, option grocery receipts tax.
Second.
Second by Counsel Perry.
Correct.
We've got it right. Okay, we have a motion by Counselman Hildebrand, and second by Counselman Perry. Mr. Intima.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in 2019, the state, pardon me, the current tax option that's in question here is for an environmental tax. This was created in 2017 as part of kind of this Hold Harmless package, when GRT had been adjusted at the state. In 2019, the state unrestricted the GRT, and so now the city, without going to vote, or public vote, can have up to 2.05 and 2.4 cents on the dollar for GRT, and 2.45 with a public vote. All this ordinance does is unrestricted, it is a form ordinance provided by New Mexico Tax and Revenue. Legal, it's legally sufficient, legal has no comment on the propriety of restricting or unrestricting.
Any further comments? Counselman Perry.
Mr. Intima, did you say that it was your understanding that this was implemented as part of the Hold Harmless that was?
Yeah, I shouldn't, let me rephrase. This was, when municipalities lost a lot of their grocery receipts, this was one of the, kind of a bunch of different taxes that were brought in, in the 2012 to 2017 era. And then, so yeah, but this one was in particular created in 2017.
Okay, all right. I just did not remember, I remember when this was created for the, is this a Safe and Clean? The Safe and, I'm trying to.
This was, this was used for Safe and Clean, but.
So, so yes, if I'm not mistaken, I, just for clarification, I think that we had it already earmarked for something else, and we took the earmark off of it and put it here, because I don't think we've touched any of the Hold Harmless. And maybe Mr. Fuentes may remember some of that, but I don't think the Hold Harmless that the state reallowed has been touched yet, has it?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, this particular type of tax was previously a category that the state allowed municipalities to adopt. So it was one of those that it could implement by ordinance. A lot of municipalities dedicated it, as it was mentioned here. But I believe you are correct. I think there might have been a little bit of confusion, but I don't think the Hold Harmless was implemented, but it was just an existing.
Okay, and I just want to clarify that we still have that option available to the full extent? I don't think we've taken advantage of it.
Yes, so that in 2019, that was just called Unrestricted Municipal Grocery Receipts Tax.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I understand, because the abstract indicates unrestricted. But were we not using the, this tax, I don't want to say illegal, but not appropriate, when we passed it back when? Because the tax that was supposed to have been done was supposed to, in my understanding, was supposed to be environmental issues with the landfill, the wastewater, and what have you. And we chose to use it for the Clean and Safe, which, as far as I understand it, didn't meet the criteria for the use of that tax. Is that, is that correct?
Without trying to dig myself into too deep a hole, the Clean and Safe program is not a perfect match to the language within the current ordinance.
And so when we used that money for the Clean and Safe, we took away from the landfill when we waived the fees, the tipping fees, to the tune of $2 million, or somewhere in that area?
Without commenting on the dollar figure, because I'm not aware, the dedication in the ordinance, as it's written, is very clear that it goes to water, sewer, or landfill, and it has to be used for maintenance or operations.
Okay.
Or facilities, pardon me, not, not operations, or facilities. So it's supposed to be money that goes to capital improvements of those funds effectively.
So when we're saying that we're going to unrestrict this 1/16th environmental GRT, that means that the city can use that money however they want to, it can go into general, the general account?
Yes.
Instead of going into a specific account?
Correct, it would be going into the general fund, although, having looked at that budget, it looks like some of that money's finding its way into water anyway.
Okay. Because my concern is that because of the way we looked at the waiving of tipping fees, and the landfill missed out on whatever amount it was, 2 million, 1.8, whatever that amount And they were, they were struggling to try and buy equipment, and I guess right now, they're down to almost zero, when they spent the 300 and whatever thousand for the last piece of equipment that they bought. Is the intent of staff to say that that money, if you unrestrict it, is that money going to go directly to the general fund? Or, my hope is that the landfill would be replenished for the amount of money that they lost because of the Clean and Safe program. Hopefully, that the consideration would be to, to direct that money to the landfill for one or two years, until they can hopefully get the money that they lost, would be my recommendation, but of course, you know, I only have one vote, so. But I just want to make sure that I, I understand that when you unrestrict it, that staff is going to have the ability to send it to general fund, and if that is the case, I would hope that they would consider replenishing the 1.8, $2 million that was lost at the, at the landfill. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Lady Arnold.
Okay, so I will almost go pretty much with what Councilman Oropesa had to say there, except I'm going to go a little bit further. I don't mind approving to advertise for a public hearing. That would actually give me 30 days, because I've already spent a good. me 30 days, because I've already spent a good amount of time preparing questions, because I have questions for our city attorney, for our treasurer, and for Councilman Corn. There are some things that bother me, in the sense that when you do read HB 479, it's not actually a requirement, it's a suggestion, and as I understood the verbiage, it says "may." So that leads me to go, okay, we've had this in place since 2017, and our infrastructure, water, and waste, they're behind, and I actually support Councilman Oropesa in saying if we basically left them be, they would become enterprises, enterprise funds with the great leadership that we have in there right now, who are actually working diligently to build those enterprise funds, and so, at this point, I have to say, I actually, unless I am advised of future plans, but putting that money into what I call the black hole, without actually dedicating it where we can track it, or I don't have to actually ask for a special audit, is preferred. So I do support advertising, but I will say, it's going to take a lot of convincing me that this is the right path, fiscally, that we need to be taking, our infrastructure needs this money. I yield.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to approve, actually consider for approval of the following appointment, as recommended by Mayor Jennings, for Chief of Police Lance Bateman.
Mr. Mayor, can you turn on your mic? Thank you.
All right, sorry, if the, Counsel Bateman, if you'd please come up. For those, I've known Counsel Bateman, the reason why, one of the reasons, some of the reasons why I picked him, I've known him for a long time, since he was very, very young. I met his father early on, and he and I worked together to craft the State Police Retirement Bill, his father was very much in tune with the regular, everyday officer's duties and, and Bateman's, their duties and functions, and he was very well thought of among all the officers that were with, with him, and as that, I, he retired and he died a few, he retired from the State Police and died, it seemed like, three months later, and, but he was a very dedicated law enforcement, to all law enforcement officers that were out there. He merely, he could, he finally got to the rank of sergeant, because you couldn't be promoted in the State Police until you, to a, an upper rank, unless you left your duty station, and his wife was in school here, learning to be a teacher, and then got to be a teacher, and then a principal, and was a principal of, oh, Monterey, I believe it was, and a very dedicated family here, and, and so, I've known him for a long time, and not friends, I don't think I've ever had a beer with him or anything else, but I followed his career, and I know that they wanted him to come to, go to the State Police, but he chose to stay here in Roswell. He's been here in Roswell, in southeastern New Mex, south and eastern New Mexico, probably more of his adult officer time than anywhere else, and from Tucumcari, he's been in Tucumcari, he's been all over, but the last nine years, he's been an officer in charge of, captain in charge of this district in southeastern New Mexico, with Carlsbad, or Eddie Lee in Chavis Counties, and I can only tell you that if you follow his activities, he started some things in the State Police, which I wholeheartedly hope that he will continue, and he's, in his interview, he committed, one of the things he'd like to do is to put a, a police officer in every school, and I think when you see the activities that have been happening in the schools lately, policemen need to be the children's friend. When you have a 14 and 15-year-old kid, regardless of the reason why they were there, being shot in a park, the way those individuals were shot, I mean, there's something, they have to get back, policemen have to be a friend of the, of the child in the park, child, all children, and I think, when I see that that program was, that he started, was adopted statewide by the State Police, I think it's really a good program to do. I think that is one of the largest things, plus I think, when you look at his experience on bomb squads, or diving, on, he is probably one of the most well-rounded individuals to ever be served in the New Mexico State Police, and he's very dedicated, his officers respect him a great deal, and when you talk to, after I made this selection, I can't tell you the number of officers that called me, to tell me thank you, that I probably couldn't have made a better choice. I know we had two very fine officers from Roswell also apply, but I, I think we, we need to take a little stop for a little outside intervention for a little bit, and I think Officer Bateman is by far the best choice for, for this, he has a little girl that's about seven or eight, and, and his wife is also a dedicated law enforcement officer, so there's, his family understands exactly where he's going from, his, of course, his mother was married to a State policeman, and his sister was married to a State policeman, and his stepfather's a State policeman, so you know, he's somebody that knows law enforcement inside and out, and so that's, that's where I came up with my pick, and, and I would like to present Officer Bateman to the council, if you have any questions you would like to ask him, I'm sure he'd be glad to answer them. Officer Bateman, would you care to make a statement?
Good evening, Mayor, council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, I appreciate the nomination, and hope to serve moving forward as the Police Chief of Roswell. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Well, are there any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion of, by Council Lady Arnold, second by Councilman Hildebrand, to approve the nomination of Lance Bateman as Chief of Police of the City of Roswell. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Thank you, by a vote of eight in the affirmative and none in the negative, welcome. Mr. Bateman is our City Police Chief of Roswell, thank you very much for applying.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, since we voted now.
Yes, sir.
If I mess up and call you captain instead of chief, are you going to arrest me?
Yes.
Please.
Sure.
Good, I need to time off.
Just refer it to legal. Lance, thank you very much, and would you like to have your wife and family stand up, or I introduce them, so.
My dad, Travis Johnson, and my wife, Rochelle Bateman. I'd like to thank them for their support, and once again, thank you all. I also would probably, my boss that I'm currently working for was here, but his bedtime's about eight o'clock, so I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Marley family, they were real supportive of me moving on, so, they're super, super people to work for, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and with the officers from the Roswell Police Department.
You better, don't forget your mom, I'm sure she's watching.
She's at home, she's at home watching the, the seven-year-old terror, so I'll be going to take her off her hands here momentarily, so.
Thank you, and I'm sorry it was so late.
Don't worry about it, I appreciate it, thank you all.
Thank you very much, you might want to stick around, you're, well, your, your wife might want to stick around and see this next one. Item 24, to consider the approv, approval of the Chief of Police Terms of Employment and Job Description. Council Lady Arnold?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of Chief of Police Terms of Employment and Job Description.
Second.
Second by, we have a motion to consider the terms of employment of the Chief of Police and job description, motion made by Council Lady Harl, Arnold, and seconded by Council Lady Halverson. Mr. Intima?
Last one, I, for me, I hope. This contract is functionally identical to the manager's contract, the salary is different, Ms., Chief Bateman will pick up where the previous chief left off, salary, in terms of the scale, and his duties, of course, have been amended to reflect state law.
Are there any questions? Councilman Hilde, oh, excuse me, Councilman Foster first, and then Hildebrand.
Yes, and that's, one of my questions was that, I saw that at 145, and I noticed that Phil, in our, our previous chief, in July, was making 142, so he must, must have had the bump, but one of my, my questions I have is, we keep doing this, we keep hiring people at, at the rate of what we had paid the person prior, when the person prior had 11 years' experience in the position, and, and we're hiring somebody straight on with no experience in the position at that same rate. I'm, it's very foreign to me, because every time I've ever seen other hirings, you get hired in, and then you start, you're years in, you start getting your colas, and you start getting those, those bumps, instead of just right out, out the bat, hiring somebody in and paying them what a person with 11 years' experience in that position had, and, you know, and I know, he's, he's been a captain, he's got experience in that, but when Phil came in, prior to the 11 years of working for us, he'd had 30 years of being a chief in other places, too, so, I, I don't know the logic that we keep doing this, but, but I just wanted to call it out, because we keep saying that, that we are, we're busted, we don't have any money, but we keep hiring people at, at or higher than what the other person we'd let go, so, I just wanted to bring that forward.
Thank you, Councilman Foster. Seeing no further comments, the item 24, consider the approval of the Chief of Police Terms of Employment and Job Description, if, on a motion by Councilman Arnold, seconded by Council Lady Halverson, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Perry?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
By eight in the affirmative, none in the negative, the terms of his employment have been approved. Thank you very much. Item 25, item 25 is to consider the approval of the Mayor's recommendations for appointment to a drought planning task force as follows. Judy Stubbs, residential counselor, Tom Jennings, residential customer, Rose Duran, commercial customer, Cameron Grimm, commercial customer, Christina Arnold, city counselor, Sean Benedict, Roswell Independent School District, Aaron Baylock, PVA CD, Jonathan McGary, supervising ranger of Bottomless Lake State Park, ex officio, and this task, this purpose of this task force is to look at the drought planning task forces, and, and look at the issues, how drought is being affected by us, and, go ahead, sir.
This is the, the drought contingency task force that is required by the Bureau of Reclamation Grant that we received, and we just got notification of award, like, two weeks ago. It's a $200,000 grant from the, the feds over the next two years, to get our drought contingency planning and water conservation planned together, and we've got a, a very good diverse group here.
So we have, like a motion by Counsel Arnold?
First I have to ask if I can actually make the motion, considering that I'm considered on here, is there?
I don't think it's a conflict.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval of Mayor Jennings' recommendation of appointments to drought planning task force as follows, Judy Stubbs, residential customer, Tom Jennings, residential customer, Rose Duran, commercial customer, Cameron Grimm, commercial customer, Christina A. Arnold, city counselor, Sean Benedict, Roswell Independent School District, Aaron Baylock, Pecos Valley Artisan Conservancy, Conservancy District, Jonathan McGary, supervising ranger, Bottomless State Park, ex officio.
Second.
Second by, have a motion by Council Lady Halverson, seconded by, or, excuse me, by Counselor Arnold, seconded by Council Lady Halverson?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So there's a, as we discussed last time, Counselor Perry and I, there's debate within Roberts rules as to whether a slate is allowable or not. There are three answers that the all-knowing Google machine and Westlaw have suggested. One is that they're not, two is that they are, so long as there's no motion, so we treat it like a consent agenda item, and the third would be a necessity to suspend the rules. So based on those three, I'd suggest that you make a ruling as to which you'd like, and if the council disagrees with your ruling, the majority could overturn it.
So I missed the part that you, were you actually saying that there is been question about it being a conflict if I make the motion?
No, 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 the conflict, it's, the question is whether a slate can exist, or we have to do single votes, and it's getting late, so, so, Mr. Mayor, if you were to make a ruling that a slate is acceptable?
Yes.
Then the council would have to vote to overturn. Uh, then the council would have to vote to overturn that ruling, so we could just vote on the slate, and it would speed things up by about twenty minutes.
Okay, I would, I would move that the slate is acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Rule that the slate is acceptable. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now do we need a roll call? We're done. It says eight, by a vote of eight, affirmative and none in the negative, uh, item twenty-five is duly passed by the council. Next we have, thank you. Next we have item, uh, twenty-six, that's ITV twenty-three dash twenty-two golf cart purchases approval and the authority to enter to the, into the city manager into a contract with Masek Rock Mountain Golf Carts for the purchase of fifty-five Yamaha, two-hundred, two thousand and twenty-three Yamaha Drive Two, uh, Kiri, consider approval. I don't know what all that is in pricing, but anyway, so we're gonna buy golf carts for the golf course. And, uh, Mr. Burris, would you care to enlighten us?
Fantastic. Mayor, Counselor, thank you very much. Uh, tonight, we're asking for approval to go ahead and, and award the bid for these golf carts and give the city manager permission to take care of it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion by Counselor Pressa?
Not yet.
I know. I say can we?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, based on the recommendation of the General Services Committee, I move for adoption of ITV twenty-three dash zero twenty-two golf cart purchase, which if adopted will award and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Masek Rocky Mountain Golf Carts for the purchase of fifty-five twenty-twenty-three Yamaha, Yamaha Drive Two Qui-Tac EFI guest carts, and one twenty-twenty-three Yamaha UMAX, uh, range picker.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Pressa, seconded by Council Lady Halverson. Is there any further discussion on the purchase of the golf carts?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, Council Lady Best.
Yes. Chad, when you go and work on the contract with this person, I assume that that's what we're voting on, I would highly suggest that maybe we get a mechanic that comes in every six months to tune these up, and also somebody that knows about GPS, because it sounds like these may be like our fire trucks that are a little above our capability of keeping them in order. And that's just my suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my question is, is on your bid form here, there's no So, it says three seventy-five, five eighty-nine with no GRT.
Okay.
So, how much are we gonna spend?
I don't, at this time?
How much are we gonna spend? I don't remember.
There's no GRT on there.
All right. I'd have to look and see what the GRT is.
Eight percent.
I don't have a calculator.
Seven point seven, I like.
I mean, I can figure it out, but...
Do we have to go back to legal, or?
I don't wanna send this back to legal either.
No, you sure?
Some people are so sensitive.
I'm showing four hundred and four thousand, five hundred and forty dollars.
And the resolution doesn't have a dollar amount in here either.
Yeah, I, I noticed that.
So, I think, I think this resolution needs to be amended to show a dollar amount. You can put a dollar amount on there for him to negotiate against, or it's just gonna be open-ended? Yeah. So, do we need a dollar amount in here?
No, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the invitation to bid, what it was awarded at. There was only one, one person came through, and, and I don't have that docket with me right now, so...
Well, my question is, do we amend this to up to your, whatever your grocery receipts tax number was?
Whose responsibility is to put the grocery receipts tax on there?
Add the grocery.
A bid would have to include the grocery receipts tax.
Yeah, just add the grocery receipts tax.
Hmm?
Add, add the grocery receipts taxes in.
Up to?
Up to.
Grocery receipts tax about thirty thousand dollars.
I like...
Well, it probably...
Yeah, no. Send it to Finance. That's yours then.
Do we need to, do we need to solve this, send it to Finance and bring it back at the special meeting?
Oh, no, we can get it done right here. What is the, uh, GRT rate?
An eight percent, so it's just over thirty thousand dollars.
Seven, zero, eight.
May I interrupt?
So, it's four hundred and two thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Um, I've conferred with the manager and the treasurer, and I think we do wanna send this to Finance to be voted on at the special, if the council's amenable.
It's gonna have to come out of Burris's budget, otherwise.
Yeah, it's gonna, no, it's gonna come out of his budget.
Yeah, amend it right here. What's in the budget? How much was in the budget?
Three seventy-seven.
Well, we can approve this much, and then if it comes back, we need more golf carts. How much are they a piece? Six, ten thousand bucks? So, we'd be losing three golf carts. I mean, that's fifty-five, they're three hundred and seventy-five thousand, so eight thousand a piece.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
There's a couple of ways to skin this cat. One, you can say up to one thirty, se- three seventy-five, five eighty-nine, including everything, including, I don't see any delivery fees on here either, because these guys are located where?
I'm sure there's not gonna be.
Colorado.
They're out of Colorado, yeah, they have a, a shop in Albuquerque.
Or you could just buy less golf carts, make the number come out that way. Drop it down to fifty golf carts, or forty-eight, or whatever the number is. I would just, I would leave it this, that the contract can't be more than this three seventy-five...
Five eighty-nine, that works.
Five ninety-three, and let the city manager do his thing.
Mm-hmm, that works.
How many would you get, fifty-five golf carts?
Less than three eighty. That's on the proposal. We gotta clean up our, I don't know where you can get a cleanup.
They're about sixty, seven thousand a piece.
Or you can send it back to, you can send it back to Finance, I'll take it.
Yeah. Except you got one other thing, you got one Yamaha range.
Kinda like get on the agenda for Monday.
So, yes, you gotta have that, so, but that's...
I've got some use.
Yeah, sixty-five hundred's about right, there's seven thousand, seven thousand a piece.
You're gonna drop out six golf carts, you do that, we probably need that many golf carts, we need fifty-five.
I, we need fifty-five, so...
Maybe you need to raise the green fees a little more.
Well, I'm probably gonna go to two bucks.
Okay, wanna make a motion there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the motion, yeah, for ITV twenty-three dash zero twenty-two to not exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And, well, just let me, and that the number of golf carts may not be fifty-five. So, this resolution has in there that says you're gonna buy fifty-five, but you're gonna cap it out at the number, so I don't know how you go about it. You just leave it up to the city manager to figure it out.
So, I get some big bucks?
Yeah. So, I make that motion to cap it out at three seventy-five, five eighty-nine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, and, uh, seconded by Council Lady Halverson, to purchase, uh, up to three, uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars worth of golf carts, and a golf ball picker-upper for as many as they can get. Is that clear to everybody? Is there any further questions? Although, well, no, we don't have, we have to call a roll again. Just, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of eight, affirmative and none in the negative, the golf carts has been bought, or however, we, once we get item twenty-seven.
Mr. Mayor, that was for the, Mr. Mayor, that was the amendment, now we gotta vote on the item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, so, so we have a motion on, on the golf carts on item, on, uh, yeah, on item twenty-six. As amended, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of eight, affirmative and none in the negative, that's also passed. Twenty-eight, consider the approval of the RFP scope of work for airport unnamed security guard services, unarmed security guard services. And, uh, so this is to, this is to, item twenty-eight is to consider the approval of the scope of work for an unarmed, uh, security guard service for the airport. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve an RFP for the scope of work for airport unarmed security guard services at the Roswell Air Center.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Council Lady Arnold, seconds. The motion for unarmed security guard services. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just here to answer any questions you may have. This is part of our settlement agreement.
We have an unarmed woman at the, at the desk that's gonna like to answer any questions about the unarmed security guards.
Are you sure she's unarmed?
You're not supposed to bring anything in here. So, are there any questions about this item? Okay, we have a motion to approve, uh, can, the approval of RFP scope of work for airport unarmed security guard services. All those, a motion made by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Council Lady Arnold. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of eight, affirmative and none in the negative, it's duly passed.
Thank you.
Next we have, okay, we've got the services. Next we have item twenty-nine. This is to consider the approval of the recommendation of RFP, uh, twenty-three dash zero zero five, second posting of the Tweedy Farm lease and authorization with the city manager enter into contract with Robinson Farms. Is there any, uh, we have Councilman Corn. Yes, you're supposed to make a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, public finance, ready to recommendation, our new city award, recommendation, RFP twenty-three dash zero zero five, we will be able to tie, second, posted because we have, that's the greatest, uh, motion.
So, we have a motion by Councilman Corn, a second by...
Second.
Council Lady Halverson. Todd, we're on a roll, would you care to, do you have anything to add to this?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, oh, you do, Councilman, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Perry.
That's fine, you can go.
Go ahead.
No, I, um, um, I, I have some reservations on, on this one, and I won't go into, to great details, except for just to say, I, I did go in and sign an NDA, and looked at the, uh, and the information from this RFP. Um, I, no accusations whatsoever to, to Mr. Versiglio or Jessica, I think they do a fine job, and I think y'all, y'all have done your, your absolute best to keep things as, as, uh, as up, uh, above board as possible, but I, uh, after looking at the, um, uh, at the information, I do have some reservations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Uh, Councilman Foster, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and that is pretty much where I stand, too. Um, as the council, I think we're, our job is to look at what is the best, and, and, um, I, I too looked at, at the bids, and I signed the NDA, and so as, as the couns- as a counselor that has to look at for the best interest of, of the City of Roswell, I can't, I can't vote for this in the affirmative, so I'll be pushing, saying no.
Thank you, Council Lady Arnold.
Um, I'm actually going to concur with, uh, Councilman Perry and Councilman Foster. Uh, I also signed an NDA, and I still feel that there, um, I don't feel like I had enough information provided to me to understand exactly what happened and how the actual, you know, the end result got to where it was, so I, myself, will, um, not support this at this point, because I don't feel like I'm educated enough to make a, a solid decision.
Okay. Are there any further comments? Okay, well, on a motion on item twenty-eight, on, uh, this is to consider the approval of the award of the recommendation of RFP twenty-three dash zero zero five, this is the second posting of the Tweedy Farm lease to authorize the city manager enter into a contract with Robinson Farms. If, uh, we better call the roll on this one. Call the roll, Madam Chairman.
Counselor Perry.
No.
Counselor Foster.
No.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
No.
Counselor Arnold.
No.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
A vote of four to four, the mayor votes yes. So, item, by a vote of five in the affirmative, four in the negative, item twenty-nine, uh, to consider the award of their, of the lease of the Tweedy Farm, uh, for this, and authorizing the city manager enter into a contract with Robinson Farm, Robinson Farms, passed by a vote of four in the affirmative and, uh, five in the negative.
Mr. Mayor, just, just point of order, and I, I, I think that that's correct, but I just wanna confirm it does not take a majority of the governing body. Is that correct?
That's correct, Counselor.
Just for clarification, because I know that question will be answered later, so might as well get it here. Thank you.
Okay, uh...
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews is not here, do we still have, he is on the governing body, should we suspend hearing, uh, about the collective bargaining agreement, till, maybe till the
Uh, Mr. Count, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, there's noth, there's one thing that we do need to speak about litigation-related, and it will be quick.
Will be quick. Okay, the stand, the committee will, uh, the council will move to executive session, and re, yes, ma'am?
Has to be voted on.
Yes, ma'am, Council Lady Arnold. Yeah. Uh, Council Lady Arnold pursuant, the council, item thirty, to hold a closed session pursuant to, uh, state statutes, to discussion of the bargaining strategy implemented with collective bargaining negotiations, and, uh, the contents of competitive seal bid proposals pursuant to the procurement code. We have a motion by Council Lady Arnold.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to consider, um, going into closed session pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, ten fifteen, one H, five, six, and seven, for the discussion of bargaining strategy preliminary to collective bargaining negotiations, the contents of competitive seal proposals solicited pursuant to the procurement code, and to review attorney-client privilege information regarding litigation threatened pending against the city.
We have a motion by Council Lady Arnold, seconded by somebody? Council Lady Oropes, Council, Councilman Oropesa? And, uh, so, on a motion.
Roll call.
Council Lady, uh, Arnold, and the second by Council Lady Oropes, all those in favor are going to executive session.
Please roll call, requires roll call.
Okay.
Council Perry.
The clerk will call the roll.
Council Perry?
Aye.
Council Foster?
Aye.
Council Oropesa?
Yes.
Council Heldenbrand?
Aye.
Council Corn?
Yes.
Council Best?
Yes.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Halverson?
Yes.
By a vote of eight, affirmative, even, none in the negative, we're going into executive session for just a few minutes.